Let's call a meeting to order. We're all present and Ben will be absent this evening. Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of March the 6th. Anyone? Item three, present and discuss the Call Lake Phase Two update. Chris?
Thank you, sir. Okay, as you know, we're in the middle of phasing plan for this program. What we're going to do is present you with where we are to date, pretty much preliminary. We are real close to done, let you know where we ended up, show you a brief top view of what we cut and/or planned to phase to get this within what we consider to be a reasonable price, and we'll go from there and see if you have any questions. Michael?
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Commission members, Mayor. The agenda tonight, we'll start with beginning of the future water demands. We'll then talk a little bit about some of the infrastructure reductions as part of the phasing plan, and then introduce to you a revised and updated schedule. But before we do that, I want to remind everyone what the Phase Two program goals were. The first step was to prepare the full build-out 30% design of the program through the year 2072. It's kind of the vision, so that you would know where you're going, and then update the cost opinion associated with that vision through the 30% design step from a capital and operation and maintenance standpoint. That's complete, that's been presented a couple of months ago. We are now off into the final step of Phase Two, which is to develop for you an executable program, one that meets your budget. There's a couple of ways to do that, a couple of different... First of all, we have to reduce costs, and how we get there, there's a couple of different scenarios for that. One is to look at value engineering, some of the items that were in the full build-out plan. Other ways to do that are to phase in components of the full build-out plan when they're actually needed from a capacity or regulatory standpoint. And then the third way to do that is to just take a look at the overall capacity of the program and get to your full build-out 2072 flows with a stepwise approach. And that's where the biggest bang for our buck occurred, is to reduce the capacity of this initial construction phase and not build for the full 2072 program need. With regards to future water demand, the Commission is very familiar with this graph. It set the whole basis for the sizing of the program, and as you'll recall, Phase One and the full build-out plan was sized based on the high-demand scenario, growth projection and future water demand. This purple line represents a moderate demand and growth scenario, and the blue line represents the low-demand and growth scenario, and of course, the pink line represents the sustainable capacity from the well field. The green line, which you may recall, was an update to the other three projections, which were done by a previous consultant. The green line was an update to those projections that was done by your staff. That was done about this time last year and presented to the Commission. And you'll see that that projection at this time last year tracked relatively closely with the moderate demand line. And what that projection tells us, that when we reach a 25-year design life of this program, it's built in the year 2022, which is the goal, the current schedule, 25 years from now, in the year 2047, you'll need to deliver 14.4 million gallons per day. Now, since this is a year old, your staff has went back and looked at what occurred during the year 2017 from a water demand standpoint, and how that usage has changed since the development of this graph, and what it might look like today with a future projection. And you can see that that green line has shifted as a result of reduced water usage within the community over the last year. And so if we go off of this projection and we look 25 years into the future for a design life, that tells us that the program needs to be sized for an average day of 12.6 million gallons per day. So that's a lot more flexibility now. If you'll recall, we were sizing for about 19.2 million gallons per day in the full build-out or the 2072 plan. Now, this tells us where we can take a pretty comfortable step into the future at 25 years, which by the way, is the design life of most of the operating equipment, most of the treatment processes themselves. There's a renewal and replacement usually associated at the 25-year mark, so that's a really convenient step to look at, to look into the future act. And so we're looking at a 12.6 million gallons per day, 25-year or 2047 program life. So with that as our basis, our design criteria, you'll recall, there are several elements of major infrastructure components, from the intake to the pipeline, there's an intermediate booster pump station, the water treatment plant, some storage reservoirs along the way. All of those are some of the major infrastructure elements associated with the program. I know this is a busy slide, so we're going to revisit each one of these in more detail in future slides, but just to kind of cut to the chase, the cost reductions to meet that 2047 or 25-year design horizon have resulted in an updated construction value of $244.5 million. With an estimated program execution and design cost of $49.3 and a Army Corps of Engineer Water Storage Contract at $6 million, bringing the total program cost as of today to $299.8 million. So where did these reductions come from? And this is what we're going to kind of talk about on the next few slides. As you can see, there were some pretty big cuts in certain areas, particularly the intermediate booster pump station and the emergency storage reservoir, and as well as some sizable cuts in the water treatment plant. One of the things I want to make sure and draw your attention to here, because it's not particularly drawn out on the slide, is that these cost estimates include contingency. So we're still carrying some construction contingency within this cost estimate. We're not saying that this is a bid day price, because we're a long ways from bid day. And so there's a lot of things that can still change between now and bid day, and so there's still some contingency in these numbers. With regard to reductions at the intake, I've listed a few of the major items that are changing from the full build-out plan. These are kind of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, things that can be deferred, phased, value engineered, to help reduce cost for this initial phase. Deferring one of three pumps as a result of the reduced capacity of the program, removing the backup generator and reducing the overall building footprint of the intake structure or the intake building itself. This resulted in a 25% cost reduction. Intermediate booster pump station, Commission, you'll recall that this booster pump station's about three-quarters of the way between Call Lake and Enid, and this booster pump station is needed to help us meet that full demand scenario of the year 2072. Well, obviously, in the year 2047, you're not there yet, so we can defer the construction of this intermediate pump station in its entirety for 100% cost reduction. There's not a whole lot of adjustments that we have made in the cost to the pipeline. We have made some, we've deferred some fiber optic communication that we were going to include in the construction of the pipeline, and some changes in the material values, but really, not a whole lot has changed in the pipeline. And we've kind of stuck by the rationale that you guys probably only want to do this once, and we want to make sure that we get enough capacity in the ground the first time we do it for that foreseeable future being 2072.
When you're deferring that, I assume that you still have a place marked off where it needs to go?
That's correct, yes.
That could change, I understand that.
That's a good question, Mayor. In fact, there's some of these items that your city staff may choose to actually include in the design and go ahead and get some bid pricing for. And if we're in a very good or favorable bid environment on bid day, some of these items that we're deducting may be, may actually be affordable and can actually be installed.
You want to follow up on that? Yes, you know, you see, we do it quite a bit. We do ad alternates when we do bids, sealed bids, and this gives us the flexibility to make sure that we can deliver the program at the 300 mark, and yet, if things are good, we can add a few of those other items back in.
Kind of like building your own house.
Absolutely.
We're still talking about putting a 36-inch steel pipe in the ground?
Yes, we are. The most important, one of the most important things to me, particularly on the pipeline, is to not go back and do it again. I can save some money going with a smaller pipe, but I can't protect the future demand, and to put another pipe beside it is going to be as much as this program. So it does not make any sense to me as an engineer to do that.
You took a big chunk out of the treatment plant.
Yes, Mayor, I did, and I'm a couple of slides from there. If we can wait, hold off on that, I'll take your questions on it. Real quick, though, the emergency storage reservoir, you guys recall what that was? We've deferred its construction in its entirety for 100% reduction. The equalization terminal storage reservoirs, remember the example of drinking out of the fire hose, and these help us keep from drinking out of the fire hose? We're going to defer about two-thirds, well, two of the three cells, resulting in almost a two-thirds reduction in cost at 63%. Water treatment plant, these are the big changes in the water treatment plant, Mayor, resulted in more than 60% cost savings.
Is that good or bad? Is it good or bad to take that much reduction?
I think it's going to be fine.
Be a little more forested than that?
First, I will, I will. First, reduce the water treatment plant's capacity from that 2072 design horizon to 2047. That's a big chunk right there. That's a big deal. I mean, that really almost cuts it in half from a capacity standpoint. Reduce some of the building area over the treatment processes. This is really more than aesthetic or value engineered type item. It would be great if all of our treatment processes were indoors. That is preferred, but it may not always be the most cost-effective way. It doesn't have to be that way. Most plants aren't that way. And then we are deferring some taste and odor treatment to a future phase. Now, there's a lot of ambiguity in that statement right there. Defer might mean just reducing some of the capacity of the future, of the current taste and odor plans. It might mean deferring one of two tools, if you will, in your taste and odor tool belt. We currently have two tools in our tool belt. We may end up deferring one of those tools to a future phase, or we may end up reducing the capacity of both tools, so that you get them both in this phase. But if you hear anything about the water plant tonight, listen to this. None of these changes in the water plant changed this water plant's ability to produce safe drinking water and meet the Safe Drinking Water Act, EPA, and ODEQ requirements. Recall that the taste and odor components of this program are to address potential aesthetics with the water, potential seasonal aesthetics. It is very wise to plan for that to occur, and we're trying to hang on to that as much as possible within your budget.
Do we have that situation with our water right now coming from wells?
You do not. You do not have that situation right now, because you have groundwater, and that groundwater is not exposed to the organic material that surface water is exposed to. And that organic material not only creates challenges from a treatment standpoint in meeting the Safe Drinking Water Act, but it creates aesthetic challenges as well in the form of taste and odor.
First time I've seen taste and odor treatment.
It's, I'm not going to say it's commonplace, but it's becoming more commonplace, particularly in Oklahoma. We have some challenging surface waters. It's tools in the water treatment plant tool belt to assist you with potentially seasonal outbreaks of taste and odor.
Okay. With all these reductions, will it affect the volume of water that can be reproduced? Because we're trying to produce 18 million gallons of water per day. Will it have an effect on the volume of water produced?
Yes, it does, reduce capacity. And what we're targeting is that 25-year design horizon of 12.6 million gallons per day, okay?
Which is coming from Call Lake.
Which is total.
Total?
Total, out of your system.
Let's back up to our demand slide.
Six million is called from the wells. Back up to the...
One too many.
Reason why, reason why I ask that, Chris, if I may?
Absolutely.
I understand the concept of not overbuilding the house.
Yes.
But in the future, with the cost of material going up and wages going up to produce this, I mean, we're kind of, I don't know.
It is a balancing act, and it's a trade-off, is what we're dealing with right now. What we've seen is that last year, our demand went down to eight and a half million gallons. It was wet and usage was down. And I told, and we told you a while back, we designed this, we planned to build this. Well, this is January's number, and it's back up. I understand that one month isn't a year, but I like to err on the side of caution. And so we start our demand from here. So what we're doing is we're building a system that'll deliver that much water today, which means if this remains reality, then we can get to 2047.
That should factor in revenue, too. If you use more water, you're going to have more revenue coming in.
If we get customers that are using this much water, we're going to have to make an investment, but we will have the revenue available to do that.
Well, the trade-off, too, is, first of all, part of this phase plan is you have to be able to afford the whole house. The whole house would be $471 million. Saying that we did have enough and bought the whole house, then we're going to have more capacity there than we need. When you have more capacity there than you need, you have to maintain it and you have to staff it. So what I understand and have been told is that none of these reductions here impact our ability to deliver safe, clean water that tastes good, mixed with well water, the same water distributed everywhere. And that's what $300 million does, which they're ultimately going to tell you. And they told you that it's, the 19-point million was the full design to get that here. On the revised demand curve, it's 12.6, and I presume we're using 2047, because that's the design life of the water treatment plant.
Yes.
But if you look at the curve going up, and what they're going to tell you, I think you're going to tell me that 300 million can get 9 million gallons per day here.
Yes.
Plus 6 million from the well fields is 15. You can see that 15 million on that demand curve, if we're right, is going to take us well past 2047, but there's a limitation with the design of the plant.
The operating equipment, the rotating equipment.
That may require, I guess, refurbishment or something at some point.
Yeah.
So, good questions. One of the things that even if we could, we had unlimited money, and we bought a 471 million plant, what we're saying is we may not need that till way past 2050. We may not need it at 2072. So then you have the wisdom of, it was that good stewardship to spend all that money on that if we don't need it. So we're trying to get down to what do we exactly need after starting with, this is the max of all these factors that we thought we might need? What was the data showing now? So he's talking about we started over from 2017?
Right here. And what we've done with the 30% design, and as what we move forward with those things that we are going to use, all what we call the hooks, all the hooks will be in that you can expand it to meet this upper demand curve. So we're planning for those additional capacity and additional items like pumps to be acquired and installed if you ever need them.
And also, something that I thought about, I hope that we use the best material.
Yes.
Because no matter how much volume of water you produce, supply and demand, if you don't use the best material, you're wasting your money. So we might as well spend the best.
Well, and I tend to agree with you. You know, we're talking about using, right now, we're talking about using steel pipe. We will use American Steel, simply because we have laid this program out such that we can utilize federal funds if they come available. So nothing that we have done has eliminated us from that capability. And some of those major items is obviously US Steel, and the other one is the NEPA process.
What do we use coming from the wells?
Steel? Concrete.
You said that coming from Clear Springs, I think that's pipe.
The 42-inch, I'm pretty sure it's concrete.
Is that right? Okay.
Hmm? Okay. It is a combination.
Concrete pipe?
It's a combination of ductile iron and concrete, so it's a little of both. Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
I want to reiterate the hook comment that Chris mentioned. I think you guys were really wise to look into the future at that full build-out 2072 30% design, so that we could identify how easy it is to add back those elements. And notice that we're not messing with the stuff that's hard to add back, like a 70-mile pipeline.
Right.
Okay. So the changes in the water plant, still going to meet Safe Drinking Water Act, still going to have lots of tools in your tool belt. This was the original layout of the water treatment plant, and I won't bore you with all the different treatment processes, but treatment buildings here, chemical storage, those are your equalization basins, lagoons, and so forth. And this is what the revised plan looks like. So just, if you don't know anything about water treatment, you can just kind of do that back and forth and see we're saving money, right? Okay. Just a view from the, looking back to the south, that's the original, that's your full build-out plan there, and there's the phased approach for 2047. The final major infrastructure element is the distribution interface component, very important component that needs to be addressed. In this phase, for the year 2047, we'll be reducing or deferring some of the volume of finished water storage, reducing the disinfection process capacity from 2072 to meet that 2047 design life. And then, instead of a standalone, high-service pump station to deliver the blended water to the community, the pump station will be integrated into the finished water storage tank. So we're kind of sharing some of the footprint there with the storage tank to reduce cost. Overall, that resulted in about a 40% reduction. It's the same table that I showed you earlier, just revisiting 244.5, 49.3 plus 6. Today, it's at 299.8. And we're still working on this. We're going to, we're trying to find additional ways to reduce cost and still stay out of our own way, if you will. So overall, the phasing strategy results, and I'm not presenting the final results to you tonight, but just kind of giving you a heads-up for the next meeting. Call Lake Water Supply Program will meet a 25-year design horizon for the water treatment plant, and like Gerald pointed out, and beyond, from a capacity standpoint. Some key elements, I think, that you take home with you tonight about these phasing steps are that the pipeline itself, we haven't really touched the pipeline, it can still supply water for the next 50 years. The water treatment plant is safe and robust. It's a good drinking water treatment system that will meet the requirements, and it addresses those desperately needed improvements in your existing distribution infrastructure system, your existing storage and pumping facilities. And it's below the $300 million target. The, just a real quick look at the current schedule, what we refer to as the baseline schedule, where the, we're in the first quarter of 2018, kind of where the blue starts to turn to green. This preliminary design includes the phasing work that we're doing right now. As you can see, we're almost done with that. The environmental work was always slated for a two-year duration, and it is a little over halfway done. Property surveys for the pipeline are ongoing as we speak, and about 50% complete. The rest of these items are yet to be initiated. Those are Phase Three and Phase Four items. Phase Three here, Phase Four with construction. I do not have the authority to change the schedule. We are glad to report that we are on schedule with what we were asked to do as far as our Phase Two scope of work, but there are some things that have the potential to impact the schedule. Things like having access to all the properties for us to complete our fieldwork. You know, we're trying to get actual permission from these landowners before we show up on their property in order to be good neighbors from day one.
You've got four years to get there.
You're going to be, you're going to be neighbors with these folks forever, and we're trying to start off on the right foot, and so we're trying to gain that actual, you know, verbal or written permission to be on their property. That takes time. It's a schedule risk. It has an impact on the cultural resource work that we're doing in the field and the archaeological studies, as well as the property and the future topo surveys. There's a potential for delays in the land acquisition process, the negotiation for land acquisition. So, you know, that schedule that I just showed you anticipated that the next phase, Phase Three, would begin on April 1st. And like I said, I'm not allowed to change the schedule. That's something that he has to do, or you have to do. But I was asked to rebaseline and just present to you an updated schedule, assuming that that April 1st start date for Phase Three was moved to July 1st for Phase Three. And I know that's hard to see, well, it's really hard to see now, but essentially, what this does is it, that duration from April 1st to July 1st kind of moves everything in that same duration. So everything gets about a three-year, four-month later start than what was anticipated, and a three- or four-month later finish than what was anticipated from the baseline. And what that means in reality is that the, you still have a new water supply program, your drinking water out of the tap in the year 2022, but just barely in the year 2022. And that assumes that there are no more scheduled breaches from July 1st moving forward. And I just identified some potential scheduled breaches on the previous slide.
Let me jump in here. It may seem like it's subtle and not too important, but to me, as the program manager and the guy responsible for executing this, this is me telling you I'm about to change the schedule. When we read the baseline of schedule, we're going to do it out in the open, and he's going to stick to the schedule until we give him authorization to change it. So this is me telling you I'm about to change the schedule, and that's really what this is about. Schedules are one of those things that if you don't stay on top of them, they can eat your lunch and create a lot of problems, and schedule is cost.
Let me go ahead and jump in, too, because really what's going to drive the schedule is coming up with the phased-in plan that's feasible, affordable, and allows us enough funding to be able to fix the other things we need to fix in the city over 30 years. We are making significant progress towards doing that. Tonight is evidence of that, and a $300 million project that brings 9 million gallons of water per day to go with the 6 million that we will continue to have in the well fields, which gives us 15 million gallons per day on average, which clearly on our growth chart takes us out past 2050. What I envision is, they're moving nicely on the engineering front. We are working with our financial consultant on projections and considering, and moving to refine those projections. I anticipate that our study session that we have the first meeting in April will be more focused on the financial projections and how much money we have to do other things so that we can all look at that. And ultimately, I'm looking at probably coming back at a meeting in May, probably the first meeting in May, with the conclusion of Phase Two, which is that feasible phase plan, and that's when I see that there's a decision point for you to make for us to move forward. Based on that schedule, July 1st is by far the sooner that I could see moving forward, to be frank with you. I think it, and certainly they told you about the schedule. I think it, and certainly they told you about the schedule risk, which is good. But I think it's important that when we move forward, we all understand what's involved, and we're all comfortable, ultimately, you guys make the decision, that we have a feasible phased-in plan that works, not just for Phase Three, but for the whole thing, to get to twenty-two, or if it slips to twenty-three. And just, they're doing their due diligence, telling you about the schedule. But it's likely that in Phase Three and future phases, we may run into issues that cause the schedule to be delayed. I guess what I'm saying is I'm less concerned about the schedule at this point than I am about completing what our objective of Phase Two is, which is to produce that feasible phased-in plan. Because I think that's most important to move forward. So I think they've shown you the schedule is gonna change. I don't know what it's gonna change to, but we're gonna know real soon.
Just to, just to build on what Gerald said, as far as the completion of the Phase Two services, I pointed out that that preliminary design bar is filling up from green to blue. When it, when it finishes up, you'll have from us a executable phased plan in the form of a technical memorandum that describes in detail what I described for you tonight. In addition to that, you will have your final full build-out design through the thirty percent preliminary design step. That's your vision that you always refer to as you decide to move forward beyond twenty forty-seven.
I look at your job and the city of Enid's job as a lot easier than acquiring the right-of-way.
That's, that's kind of our job too, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. I'm not doing that.
I understand that. But to build a pipeline, probably gonna be the easiest part of the entire job, even though it's seventy miles.
Yeah.
Because you just start digging and come to Enid. And the treatment plant is a given. But to me, the unknown is the right-of-way.
I think you're correct, Mayor.
Time will tell.
And that's why we listed it as a schedule risk, because it's, it's of paramount importance. Any other questions for me?
We do have one person that has some comments and would like to speak to it. He's a dentist, Dr. Bill Taylor. So if you don't mind listening to him. Bill, if you would, use the microphone.
Okay.
And he may want you to answer some questions.
I'm Dr. Bill Taylor, and my office is just over here, about a hundred and fifty yards. And I want to ask you to, while you're thinking about and planning for the water plant, this is an excellent time to do something that every citizen of Enid could benefit from. It would improve their health and also enhance their standing of our country, of our city, and have a water, drinking water that is second to none anywhere, and that would be to add an RO, reverse osmosis, system treatment into this water. And I'm, I bet that a number of you have an RO system in your house, and you can know the difference in having one and not having one. But the average citizen in Enid cannot afford one of those systems in their house. And so they're just forced to not enjoy the benefits that are available to them, which we, as a city, could do, and do it at the time we're updating everything else. And would just pay off forever and ever.
Do you guys want to address how we're dealing with the odor and the taste in the water treatment plant? I think that's what we can tell you and the public for now. We're not at the end of this phase, Dr. Taylor, but we're getting there, and I appreciate your comments. They're gonna tell you what we've done so far.
Dr. Taylor, my name is Michael Graves, and I work for Garver as their program manager for this. Those are some really good comments, and reverse osmosis treatment is certainly a very robust, well-proven treatment process for a variety of waters, including drinking water. We have looked at a number of water treatment plant alternatives. I think we shortlisted down to six different drinking water treatment process evaluations, six different treatment trains in a previous phase. Reverse osmosis was evaluated as one of those six. When we look at the objectives of the, of the treatment plan, it's first and foremost to, to meet the Safe Drinking Water Act. All six of those can meet the Safe Drinking Water Act. Reverse osmosis was, was going to do that with the highest price tag, not only from a capital cost standpoint, but also from an operation and maintenance cost standpoint. One of the thing, and I agree with you, it is very superior treatment, but one of the things that you have to deal with, there has to be a really good driver for putting in a reverse osmosis system on a scale of this magnitude. One of the drivers that could potentially take us to RO would be softening the water. Enid currently has relatively hard water. And there was a decision that was made early in the program to, to match Call Lake water as closely as possible with the existing groundwater from a water quality standpoint, so that when we blended the two waters, the two waters weren't fighting against each other, that that wasn't a challenge. And if they are fighting against each other, or we dramatically change or soften the water through reverse osmosis treatment, and we put that water into our fifty, sixty-year-old distribution system, we have a potential to change the characteristics or the coatings that are in that distribution system today. And I'm not saying that we would end up in a Flint, Michigan situation, but we would have some water quality concerns if we changed the characteristics of that water dramatically different from the groundwater that you have today. So that kind of, that was one reason why we, the cost, the water quality characteristics of RO-treated water, and two, RO does such a good job of treating water, it removes everything from the water. And you have to deal with everything you remove from the water. Well, we don't really need to remove everything from the water, all the minerals and salts and things of that nature, those are, those are okay to be in the water at certain, at certain concentration levels, but RO removes them all, it strips them. And once we remove them, we've got to deal with them. And on a project of this magnitude, this size, that's a lot of contaminants, not contaminants, constituents that you have to remove, that you have to deal with. And you can't get a discharge permit to discharge those constituents in the state of Oklahoma. You have to do deep well injection. And deep well injection is not very well thought of.
Especially lightly.
I don't know if you guys had a rough weekend or not, but... So anyway, RO is a very superior treatment process, very costly, and has some intangibles about it that made it not really the best fit for this scenario. To answer your question, we are addressing taste and odor with the use of ozone and granular activated carbon. Those are the two main tools in our water treatment plant tool belt to address taste and odor. Anything else?
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Michael. Item, item four, present and discuss the Meadow Lake Trail crossing. Chris, is that you?
Thank you, sir. No, it's not me. But I'd like to introduce Brett Kabinus. He's the engineer at the top of the firm that we selected, is best qualified to do this, this study for us, and he'd like to tell you what he's gonna do.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Brett Kabinus, as Chris alluded to. Basically, the, the scope of this will be a detailed study on pedestrian access at Meadow Lake. And mainly what we want to look for, can I get this to move forward? There we go. The RFP that was out in November of last year identified four major areas where we wanted to look at pedestrian crossing from the north side of the Meadow Lake to the south side amenities of Meadow Lake. Those include crossing upstream of the spillway, crossing over the existing spillway, a low-water crossing downstream of the spillway, and then a crossing adjacent to the State Highway eighty-one bridge. In going through our RFP process and our submittal process, we had some other additional thoughts of ones that wasn't originally looked at, but maybe a floating bridge structure across the, across the lake. So as we look at these, and when we start talking about what we want to do is a conceptual design that would cross somewhere upstream of the existing spillway, somewhere in the vicinity, just east of, just east of the railroad crossing all across the lake, basically in the center of the picture right there, would be in this area right here. That's one option that we would want to look at with our study. Second option that we talked about is crossing over the existing spillway in this location right here. The third would be a low-water crossing that would be below the spillway but adjacent to the existing railroad tracks. And then the fourth option that was identified in the RFP would be one adjacent to the Highway eighty-one bridge structure through there. And again, we mentioned that earlier, we had another conceptual thought that we wanted to look at, and as we go through the study here, is one that would be a floating bridge across the lake, and in, in essence, also potentially could be something to be done with conjunction with the Oklahoma Water Wildlife Resources. Currently, Meadow Lake is a fish-close-to-home lake that the water, or the Wildlife Department has provided some additional funding for, for that. The Wildlife Commission also provides improvement dollars, and it's a grant program that we would want to investigate, that they may buy off on an opportunity to build something like this that could serve a dual purpose, also access to and from the north side and south sides of the lake, but also be able to fish off those well. So our study's gonna produce a couple of different things, and one, we'll develop conceptual renderings for all of these design options that we look at, and we may find another one even as we start through the study process. But also, what we want to do is develop what we call a decision matrix, and this is just a brief example of some of the criteria that we will look at with the study. Obviously, the biggest is the overall park connectivity from the sidewalks, the trails, the restrooms, the parking lots, things of that nature. We want to connect from the north side of the lake to the south side of the lake. We want to make sure we have ADA-compliant pathways, access to and from, impacts on the floodplain. Obviously, we don't want to have an adverse impact upstream of whatever we build through here. Going through permitting requirements, what does that entail? We want to have a decision matrix on those things as well. Constructibility. Obviously, cost will be a huge driver in this. We want to make sure that we have at least a rough order of magnitude of cost of what each one of these options may look at. And then also some other criterias that may or may not even be identified at this point in time that you, as the commission or even staff, may want us to investigate as we go through this. So this is just an example of what kind of a matrix that we will also provide with a detailed report along with your renderings for each one of these options that we're gonna look at. Schedule is a little bit different, obviously. The last time we were scheduled to be here, the last part of February, and the ice storm kind of postponed that. So basically, what we're gonna do is start, if approved, we'll start our task one, and that's our field reconnaissance in, in early, early March. Develop our conceptual designs through March and April, have a draft of preliminary study in mid to late April, and then a final report and presentation back to you all in May. Now, in the interim, we will probably have some additional meetings with staff and with commission as well, as we want to come back to make sure we're not too far off base on what your thoughts and your visions are for this project. So with that, open to some questions?
How smart is it to cross that railroad track twice?
Well, our options right now is we would like to stay, only cross it one time. We don't want to cross it multiple times. But we also want to look at the connectivity of your trail system, also your future trail system. There are some opportunities to look at that, and that may be a potential funding option as well, is the Department of Transportation has what they call Transportation Alternative Projects, TAP projects, that provide funding for those, which the city of Enid has also utilized in the past.
Is there a way to cross it one time?
Not to connect all the amenities on the north side and all the amenities on the south side.
East side next to Highway eighty-one would be your only.
That would be the only one, one time. It's a very lengthy, lengthy route, though.
Is, is this plan also going to show how we're going to connect? The, the previous drawings that we saw ended the trail at the entrance to the south end, edge of Meadow Lake Park. And then, it's always been a little bit of mystery to me as to how we're gonna get them from there down to the lake.
No, that is not a part of this project. That is something that we'll have to deal with at the time.
Don't you think we ought to do that before we build a bridge? We gotta figure out some way to get the people, you know, from...
Commissioner, we, we can, I can answer that. Yes, we can work on that. What this specific proposal does is figure out the best way to get across Meadow Lake, which is the most difficult problem we have of putting together that final plan of going from the south end where you've seen it terminate to the other side where it terminates on the north side. The hardest part of that is crossing this. There's five different options, at least they're looking at. What I want to get out of this meeting, because quite frankly, this is already budgeted, this is less than fifty thousand dollars, and you don't make decisions here. What I'm looking for is input on that, that, go back to that criteria slide, that matrix slide, please. This is what we're trying to get out of this to drive decision-making. So if you see factors or criteria that you think we should consider, I'd love to hear them, because I'm gonna give them to these guys to consider, and I'm probably gonna ask them also to weigh those criteria, because some of those criteria are probably more important to us than other criteria. And ultimately, I think it's gonna become obvious what the best option may be if we get the right criteria. That's my non-engineer viewpoint. That's what I'm trying to get out of this presentation.
Don't you think the question I was asking about, though, would be addressed in that number-one item there, overall park connectivity to trail sidewalks and park amenities?
I think-
I mean, to me, a big part of that is how we're gonna get the trail down to the lake. And I-
I don't know how we're gonna measure that, but since you guys came up with that one, why don't you answer that one?
We're aware of the locations of the existing trails that connect to the very south end. We're gonna take a very cursory look at that and have some conceptual idea of how to make that connection work.
Really isn't a trail there yet, but I'm-
We, we have seen the plan. Yes, yes.
We've got it designed.
Do you? Okay. Then we'll get it down to the water?
No, get it from the south side to the base.
Yeah, I got that one. Okay.
We designed that part ourselves, and I'm confident we can design the rest of it ourselves. What we're not confident of is the best way to get across the creek. There may not be any real good options, and some of those options are probably a lot more expensive than other options. And constructibility's part of it, FEMA and floodplain impacts are part of it. So we thought it wise to have an in-depth look at that. But I hear the point, Commissioner, about the connectivity, and I'm sure it'll be simple, just time and money, right, Chris? And you can design the rest of it if we figure this part out.
And the other, the other important part is, I know where I'm starting on the south side and on the north side, but where am I going? I'm trying to nail that down.
And there's no way you can go on the west side? Right-of-way wise, softball fields or the softball field?
The challenge we have, have that with that one is getting across Route, the Route Bridge, and that's not quite wide enough for pedestrians. So you don't really want to invite them to walk across that bridge unless it's set for that.
And as an avid golfer and not a very good golfer, the closer I get a trail to the golf course, the more likely I'm gonna hit a pedestrian on the golf course. So we would, we would probably shy away from moving any farther west than the existing railroad crossing.
Fair enough.
Anything else?
Can you do all this in ninety days?
Western Oklahoma boy says he can get it done, he'll get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys talk so long, I lost my place.
You guys start over?
Out of five, discuss the petty larceny ordinance. Item five, discuss the petty larceny ordinance. Carol, is that you?
Yes. Petty larceny is defined by state law to be anything not exceeding $1,000. It used to be 500. They've, in their wisdom, have decided that it should be 1,000. So this proposal makes that change. Additionally, there is a slight difference between petty larceny and shoplifting. Shoplifting is a specific type of petty larceny. And shoplifting allows the officer to arrest someone without a warrant. It is an exception to the Fourth Amendment and its statutory. But it only applies to merchandise or money stolen from a retail establishment. And the previous ordinance defined petty larceny as larceny of merchandise. And this makes the distinction, because there are times when people steal things outside of a retail establishment and outside of taking merchandise and money. For instance, you know, you could have your bicycle stolen from a schoolyard. And now, the way this is, the way the ordinance is right now, if a bike is stolen from the schoolyard, then it has to go to the county. And the district's attorney has more important things, not that for the young person whose bike is stolen, that's very important, but I think we can handle that kind of petty larceny at City Hall. So this would make the distinction between petty larceny, all of them, and shoplifting. And shoplifting is the one that allows you to actually arrest the person and not wait for the judge to sign the warrant. And then the final question is, do we need to, for petty larceny, does it need to carry 60 days in jail for a second offense? And if it does, then we shouldn't change the Section C violation, but I think $500 plus cost is enough of a deterrent. But it's obviously up to you. If you want, we can keep the conviction after being previously convicted. We can do a $750 fine and 60 days in jail. I can't remember a petty larceny ever actually, a petty larceny person going to jail, but you never know. So those are, this is the proposal. Any questions?
I do have one question.
Yes.
If petty larceny is theft of something over 1,000, what is a theft under 1,000?
I'm sorry, petty larceny is up to 1,000.
Over is grand larceny.
And over is grand larceny. And it carries...
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I misunderstood the way it was worded. For some reason, rather, I got the impression that it had to be...
Not exceeding 1,000.
Okay.
So can you do the $500 fine? So right now, the fine is $500, right? But then, if they get a second offense, it's 750 plus jail time?
Mm-hmm.
So could you still...
We can still do that.
Leave the 750 and take out the jail time?
Yes.
Because I think the, I mean, I think a second offense, the fine should be higher, but maybe not necessarily the 60 days. Does that make sense to everybody else?
Okay.
Or do you want to leave the jail time in?
I know what you're saying. I'm not looking at jail time. I'm more concerned about the adjudication of it. They still go through the normal processes, go to trial before the judge, an opportunity to plead their case and all of that.
Absolutely. Now, if it carries a seven, the second offense, if it carries 750, they would be entitled to a jury trial. Anything over 500, you are entitled to a jury trial.
Now, that puts us in the point again to where we don't really have the...
Yeah. But...
If they stole something valued at $25, we could still fine them 500.
Right. And if they stole something a second time for $25, the second time, if you, you know, they would be entitled to a jury trial if we keep it at 750. How would you like to see it at the next meeting?
I mean, I don't want to see us keep taking things off just because it might have resulted in a jury trial, and I know those are a huge pain, but I feel, I mean, I don't know, I don't want to take all the teeth out of everything.
I understand.
You know what I mean? Because they never may be like, "Well, I'm never going to have to go to trial on this. I'll just keep doing it."
Well, they do have to go in front of Judge Long, and $500 is quite a bit, but we can keep the 750.
We haven't had a jury trial here in a long time, have we?
We've never had a jury trial.
Oh, we have a perfect record, I guess.
And that is a long time.
But you never...
Yeah.
Never say never. Never say never. And, you know, it's not catastrophic. It would just take...
It's just a pain.
Quite a bit of time. What would you like to see? And the other thing is, we can just... Okay. And then you can make a motion for 752.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. The next one is incredibly short and easy. Oh, are you ready, Mayor? I'm sorry, I jumped the gun.
Are you going to the Construction Board of Appeals?
Yes.
It's all yours.
Okay. Construction Board of Appeals. We've got lots of technical codes. And in 2015, I mean, we have lots of them. We've got residential, international building, the fire safety, the, there's, I think, probably about eight. Okay. Each one of them needs a Board for Appeals. And when they were, you know, when they were adopted or ratified in 2015, a couple of the lesser ones, we did not put in an amendment that provided that the Construction Board of Appeals is the Board of Appeals. So, and it looks to me like you don't, you all, what we should have is one paragraph, 9-1, that says, "Construction Board of Appeals." The Construction Board of Appeals, as further defined in Section 9-1-2, is the board to consider special exceptions to and here all appeals of decisions and interpretations of all the various technical codes found in Title IX of ENID Municipal Code 2014. It's one sentence, and it basically just corrects the fact that we've got a couple Board of Appeals that we, if you look at the technical codes, it will leave the name of the appeal board blank, and we didn't put in the name. So this puts in the name, and pretty soon, we will be looking at the 2017 codes. So this is kind of a Band-Aid until we get 2017. And I apologize. I, this is actually a, we've had a lot of, I just didn't look at it carefully enough. I believe that in your packets, you got this one sentence, but that isn't the right ordinance, and I apologize. But it's very simple. It just says, "All of the Title IX technical codes all go to the Construction Board of Appeals." That's what has actually been happening since 2015. It's just, this makes it clear. And it's one sentence, and it actually, we removed a code, the standard amusement device code, in 2015, and so I put this in its place. And it's one sentence.
What were we trying to do when we changed all that until 2015?
Okay. In 2015, each, every about, every two years, there's a whole new batch of technical codes, which requires us to look through the codes, check what the state's doing...
Stay wide.
Stay wide. And then, we have certain things that are specific to ENID, so we make amendments. And there are a couple codes that very rarely get used. All the ones that are used all the time have this, but I think there's a code that we actually haven't adopted, changed for a couple of years, because it's not used that much in the state. And then, two of the codes didn't get the actual name, so that it doesn't show where you would go for an appeal. So we're, this will change that, and this may be an easier way of delineating that the Construction Board of Appeals, which actually is formed through the International Building Code, that's the one that talks about the Construction Board of Appeals. And what we've said is, every single technical code goes to the Construction Board of Appeals. So this may be an easier way of doing it than going in and adding the amendment into each code in the place that that code talks about appeals. We've always done the...
What are we trying to come into compliance with the state requirements?
I mean, probably, because we have to go through and, we have to go through and accept those building codes every couple of years, and we're always a little bit behind.
Yeah.
And they're always in different, seem to me like they were all in different phases, different years.
Yeah, I think, I think they always come out in odd years, so there's probably a 2017, but it takes the state some time to have their standardized amendments. They never, the state never accepts the code as written. Now, we've actually, this is more than you guys ever wanted to know about these technical codes, but we've, Angela and I have actually talked about the fact that, like, one of the big codes has like 80 pages of changes from the state, and then we make changes too. And so we've talked about, so if you use the International Building Code, you've got to read the book, then go to the website and look at what the state says, and figure out how that's changed, and then look at our amendments. And so we've talked about, so you end up having three, three different things, and we've talked about, how can we make that easier for the person who's doing business in ENID just to be able to look at one thing? Because at least for me, it gets pretty complicated. We have to look at the book, then you've got to go to the website, and then you've got your own City of ENID.
Tell me who they is that makes the changes?
You. Okay.
On state level.
Oh, on the state level. I can't remember the entity.
The Oklahoma Uniform Building Co. Commission is who makes the decisions on what the state will adopt. And then we've been adopting what the state has been adopting since their inception, which is, I believe, like in 2010, 2011, is when that body came to play. So we have not, prior to that, anything that the City of ENID wanted to amend had to go in front of the Construction Board of Appeals before we adopted codes, and they would make a recommendation to the mayor and commission at the time. So now, we've just been adopting what the state adopted.
And then sometimes doing our own amendments?
We haven't the last few years, because we've tried not to be more restrictive than the state. So whatever the state says is our mandatory minimum is what we've been doing.
Okay.
And if the appellant doesn't accept the decision by the Board of Appeals, then it goes to District Court, right?
Yes. I think that we've got most of them, maybe three or four codes don't have any amendments, but we've got a few little amendments for like the fire, the building international code, and one or two for the residential.
Some of the things we've amended are things that we've just wanted in place, like bond requirements and things such as that. They don't really amend the technical codes.
Yeah. Names, getting the officials right, so that you actually know who you should talk to, you know, instead of just, and there's places in the codes that have a place for you to put your own signature. Yeah, you know, like code administrator or manager of, you know, what, a certain department.
Right. Because we want all of our appeals to still go before the Board, Construction Board of Appeals, we need to do this amendment, because it wasn't added last time. We've still continued to do that. We just don't have too many appeals anyway, so we've maybe only had two since we adopted this last code cycle.
Are you going to change the ordinance?
Yes.
Changes to...
That's what this is talking about.
Yeah. This makes the changes for, this one paragraph makes the changes for all of the current codes, so that it's clear, because it's kind of an omnibus section that says, if you do an appeal for any of the technical codes, it goes to the Construction Board of Appeals. That's the purpose, so that we don't have to keep changing each one of the codes just to say the same thing over and over.
So that is what we're going to vote on?
Yes. If you guys don't have an objection right now or any suggestions, we'll put it on for the next meeting, and you can vote on it then.
Sounds wonderful.
Okay.
That's different, always to get it. Item seven, we will now adjourn meeting upstairs at 6:30.
Thank you for watching the ENID City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable Channel 12 and in high-definition on Channel 112. In addition, the study session is live-streamed on the web at enitv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the City of ENID website at enit.org.